This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. The time being 4:51, I'd like to call this meeting of August 17, 2023, to order. Almost caught me again. And at this time, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right, we need to review and approve the minutes of. We have 7:20. Have been corrected. You want to take those first? Usually puts the correction. Oh, okay. On page three of five, it's in bold, under non-public. It says, other than a member of this board. And. Anyone have their old ones to look back? Anything? Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the approved corrected minutes of July 20, 2023, for approval. Acceptance, I should say. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll bring forward the August 3, 2023 minutes. I do have a question. Page one of four. Last paragraph. Where it says, Sluckman Scanlon explained Mr. Langione was bringing up the bush that has turned into a tree and wants that removed. And I'm not sure that he actually explained that it to us that he wanted it removed. Didn't he say that he wanted it? Or that or this was used telling us that because he came on later and didn't he want it just trimmed?
I don't know, we had a discussion about removing it.
Mentioned that it had overgrown into a tree.
Right, and that's later on in the next sentence. He she does. It is reflected, but the section where the true grew. Tree grew into the fence, leave that the wood in there and it would have to be surgically removed. That that does go into the next portion of it. If you're fine with it, it's fine with me, but I I recollect that he didn't want, when he spoke, he didn't want it removed. He just wanted to work with the town and have it trimmed or pared down a little bit so that it could see the fence and it would be a more pleasing area.
You can see the fence on the property owner's side. I'm I'm curious what his intention was about the bush because very little of it extends over onto his property. Interesting situation. I have a question about that paragraph. It says just above the John Sluckman Scanlon explained the landowner had mentioned when they are plowing. I wonder if we should put, because you meant the town.
When DPW is plowing.
Right, if we should put DPW there instead of they, because that could be confusing. Don't know who they is. Just a thought. We don't want people to think that it's the property owner. So is is what he's saying is the DPW is doing that?
Yes. It was in.
They're the ones that.
I had brought up that they should be using a snow blower instead of a plow because it pushes the bank back.
They're plowing the sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
He was referring to the sidewalk on on Winter Street and the DPW takes care of the Winter Street, winter maintenance. And that's away from the owner's property.
It does say in the next on the next page about having talking, yeah, wanting Kevin to look at it. But it doesn't say specifically that it's DPW pushing us to just have Kevin to look at the plowing issues. I think we should be specific. We don't want to imply that the property owner is doing it.
Appropriate to put like in parentheses right after they just put DPW.
Say that again.
Right after where it says when they are plowing, just put in parentheses.
EPW.
Clarify. It's a good way of doing it.
Any other corrections or concerns? Hearing none, we'll send this back, have it corrected. Okay. Next on our list, I'd like to make a motion that we accept a $500 donation from the Franklin Savings Bank for a flower barrel sponsorship. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much from Franklin Savings Bank. I'd like to make a motion to accept a $500 donation from GTM Linscaping for flower barrel sponsor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to accept a $45 donation from David in Inga. I hope I didn't destroy that. Cosgrove to Tilton Senior Center.
Begging.
Thank you very much from the Cosgrows. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. Time being 5:03, we have the 24 2024 budget discussion and finance update from Tim Pearson. Oh, he passed out packets for you.
Yes, you should have it right in the front. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So just a little bit about what I'm going to talk about this afternoon. I wanted to go through a little bit of the status of where we are year to date in 23. Also talk about the first floor project as it relates to that. And then get into some of the questions that I'd like the board to think about for the 2024 goals. So the numbers that I have attached to this report are based on the report that you received on August 3, which represented the end of July activity, which was our last month end, complete month end. And and at the time of that, we're running about three and a half percent under our expense budget or about $200,000 under budget, which is a good thing. And that's primarily due to the vacant positions that we've had at the police department and Public Works. As you may recall, earlier in the year, the board did authorize budget transfer for the survey work at Morrison Avenue. That was one of the things that came out of the police department's line. But right now, we're sitting at about as of the end of July, $200,000 under budget overall for the town. The two departments that exceeded the 58% that you know, if everything fell equally every month and every month was one twelfth, which of course it doesn't. But the admin budget was over budget as well as the finance budget. The admin budget was over budget because of the first floor expenditures. And the finance budget was over expended because of the timing of the bond payments. But the the finance budget should be on target by the end of the year. And the admin expense, as I said, was due to the first floor. So as of right now, our progress billing on the first floor as of today and on August 17, the we've spent $93,000 to date on the first floor expenditures. And of the things that haven't come in yet that we're expecting, we should end up right around about a little under $105,000 spent for that first floor project. At some future meeting, Jeannie and I are going to discuss recommendations based on how the rest of the budget is looking through the end of the year as to, you know, whether we recommend using some of the budget for to make up for that or some other grant monies. And to give you some options for that, or it could just simply be left as it is, just with that over expense. The in the revenue status, we are lagging, which is not unusual for this time of year. We generally have busier periods and slower periods. The one area that is killing it is in land use and building permits. They're over 100% of their revenue target for the year as of the end of July. And then other items that that we have, and I don't have any overall concerns. I I always watch the motor vehicles very closely because that's such a large part of our revenue budget. I'm always concerned about that, but so far it's it's not far off from where we were. And given the disruption that we've had, you know, it could be the people that may have registered earlier are waiting until we're, you know, we're back open more normally. So it remains to be seen, but I'm it doesn't. It's not a kind of concerning point. It's just the summer doldrums, if you will. The other items, all the encumbrances have been spent this year with the exception of the weapons. And the last item for the weapons is before we get the invoice for the new guns, the old guns have to be turned in. So they're currently going through their certification on the new guns. And once that's all done and the other guns are turned in, we'll get our final invoice for that. And that'll be the end of our encumbrances for the year. And then also in forfeiture funds, this has been a very long process, as Jeannie will tell you. But we ran into several several snafus with the forfeiture funds. And you may recall, there was a time where our reporting, we we just were able to make the deadline. And I believe it was within seven minutes one afternoon to to keep it live. And that probably was about 13 months ago or so, or 14 months ago. And we just received this month of $31,721.26 of forfeiture funds that are in, and those are federal funds. Those could be used for a number of different things, one of which could be towards the purchase of a third Tahoe. So I have included the July copy of this and and of the the financial summary report. And every week you should receive in your email this report. So the only time you won't see any kind of change is if for some reason I haven't been able to do the update for the expenditures. But generally speaking, it's it's set. And when by the time that you receive this, each of the department heads would have received theirs prior to that. So Catherine gets her expenditure report every week and every department head receives theirs on Thursdays in the afternoon, prior to this report coming out. So in any event, there are a few notes alongside some of the expenditure lines. And those are pretty much related to the the encumbrances, the different encumbrances we've had and or budget transfers so that we can keep a clear eye on, you know, how things have mapped and where things have been spent. And if there's been a change to that budget line, why and where it's where it's been transferred to. And then on the the very last page, again, that that helps show how we got from town meeting with our encumbrances, our Warren article changes done at town meeting, those that were approved that go into the operating budget. And then shows our expense budget reconciliation to what was printed in the town report. So if you were to open up your town report and look at your your total budget there, you'd see a number and you'd be able to tie that out to this and how it changed. Why it changed.
Mine's cut off on the end, is it is?
That was just the very percentage. That was just the percent column.
Got it, okay.
So, yeah, unfortunately, that we don't have all of our resources available at hand right now, as you might imagine. So in any event, so if there are no questions right now on 23. And so the bottom line on 23 is we're in good shape in spite of the fact that we've had a lot of extraordinary expenses this year. Again, it's because of the primarily because of the vacant positions that have or had not been filled up to this point. So if I may, I'd like to move on to the 24 budget goals. So some questions for you in the for years in the police department, we've had the chief's wages as a separate line. And then we've had two other wage lines outside of overtime and that sort of thing. One of which has been the support staff, which incorporates the admin assistant and then the communications group. And then everyone else has been in officers' wages. And at one point in time, that was appropriate because everyone was also in the union. But now the the sergeants are not in the union, basically the command staff's not in the union and the attorney prosecutor is not in the union. So it made me wonder whether you wanted to, for better visibility of what patrol is. Because when someone reads officers' wages, they're thinking, that's the cop I see on the street, you know, driving or pulling somebody over. You know, that's what I think of. So the question for you is, does it make sense to have a separate line that that reads command staff that would have the attorney prosecutor and sergeants in it and eventually lieutenant, once there's a lieutenant position filled? Or do you want to leave it the way it is? Or do you want to break it out even further where you would have the command staff and maybe the attorney prosecutor separate? So that's a question for you. And and it's really, again, as I say, when you look at that one big line that's almost almost a million dollars and it says officers' wages, it it's not just the officers. So it could be retitled. It could be called officers and command staff or some other type of thing. But I'm just looking for some guidance as to whether you think it's important to reflect it differently or just keep it the way it has been.
I like it. Go ahead.
I I think it would be a good idea to put it as change the title of it so that we don't. Makes it easier for budgeting to see how things have changed and, you know, our total expenses in that line gone up and down. Once we start separate line, then harder to track how things have changed from year to year.
So the the idea I sort of had in mind is at one point in time, you know, it was difficult to tell how many officers were budgeted. So that's that was the only reason why I was thinking that, you know, it's harder to see how how much you're spending on off, you know, the on the beat officers versus the rest. But yeah, that we could easily retitle that. Is that how everyone feels? Because from a comparison standpoint, it's the easiest. It's what people are used to seeing.
I like whatever is more transparent to the taxpayers, which is to have it broken down as much as we can, which is why our budget is presented the way it is. If you look at other towns budgets, they're still lumping. Like our three pages of administration is one line administration.
Yeah.
I guess the reason why I was saying that is because if you see officers' wages and then all of a sudden it goes down, well, we're saving money. You really have to start digging into it.
Well, and people should.
What the changes are over the year, but somebody could get a calculator out.
So it's not it's not something you have to decide right now, but I thought it was it was worth looking at. And primarily because you all the officers are are in the union and the command staff is not. So that was just one of the.
Possible to put a note in it if we did break it down for at least the first year that says formally contained in this line?
Of course, yeah.
So if we hadn't added the line and just have a note. So if somebody's looking at the budget, it doesn't look like, oh, these all went down.
Right, absolutely.
And then this one went up by 100%.
Right, right, right. Now, I I always try to make sure that it's clear. Yeah, because it would be right next to it as well. So, you know, if if the board chose to do that.
I like to go with your suggestion, Tim. I like it broken down.
Command like a command staff.
Exactly.
Got the note.
So you have.
With the note.
So basically, the officers' wages would then represent the union, the officers' union. And then, okay.
Right.
All right. Is that is that?
You can do that. There's tons of notes there, so I think for the next year.
And that will have the lieutenant sergeants and attorney prosecutor? Okay. Okay, so that brings me to my next question. All right, and then for the finance and IT departments. So they've been broken out as two different departments and maybe you want to tackle this a different, you know, at a later date. But do you want to combine those based on, you know, the changes that may be made in terms of job description? Do you want to leave them as separate? How do you want to handle? And there's nothing that says you have to change anything budgetary wise. You can leave it as it is budgetary wise. But if you look in the if you look in the budget, it specifically says, you know, salary for each individual department. So but and it titles a director. So it might need some title change or a or to be put into one. It's something to think about as you.
Are you talking specifically budget?
Specifically for budget, yeah.
Where where right now for the public that's listening in right now, we have police and and Public Works and all the IT all under separately under IT. So are you suggesting that we put it under?
Oh, each of the departments?
Each department or keep it separately under the way it is under IT? And then I think it's more transparent to us and to the residents that under individually under IT, police costs this much money and Public Works, it costs this much money. And senior senate costs this much money. I think it's a little bit easier to understand because you break it out. And then for the totality of IT itself, we have a total for all departments. To me, I think it's a little bit easier.
So basically, for budgetary purposes, we leave it as it is?
For me, anyway, I I don't know the board.
Well, I I think since it just came out today, I'd like to digest it.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's nothing is.
Budget season comes fast, but we still have a little bit.
We have, we have plenty of time. It was it was really just something to think about.
Yeah.
You know, and and what you think would be most representative and most meaningful to the public. And it's it's really just a a presentation of how you want it shown in the budget. The other, the other thing is in terms of priorities, you know, there are a number of things that are out there right now. The Island Recycling Center, the different events that the Economic Development Group was going to put on for, you know, the Summer Fair, the the fall event as well. And then the concert series, you know, making sure that there's sufficient funds so that next year, there's a there's a group established to, you know, really help that along. It seemed to be something that was has been discussed, but I thought this, you know, this should be, you know, maybe not one of the major priorities, but certainly something you want to keep on the the front burner so that we plan for it and make sure that we've got those resources for that group. And 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 if something needs to be done differently, you've got the money for it. And then so and again, those are just some ideas, but it always helps when when looking at the budget, looking at what things are coming up that year, what's the priority for the board? I think the the recycling center is going to be a big plus for citizens. When I've had to go over to Public Works to to drop something off or pick up something from Gail, who's been working there. I found that I've got to be careful when I'm pulling in or or leaving if it's a day when the the transfer station's open because there's a lot of traffic. And and it's great to see. And I think it's he's going to be very busy over there once things are up and running. And and I think, you know, that's another reason why, as you look at how you want to apply resources to any priorities this year, that might be one of the areas that, you know, is a top, top item. And then finally, I just wanted to go through the overall schedule and make sure that this would be appropriate. This is pretty much what we've done in the past. The the Budget Committee has yet to meet for an organizational meeting. And there, as you're aware, the their secretary has indicated that she wasn't going to continue this year. And I believe an ad was put out for that position. But in August and in September, I was looking to establish and and collect the department requests. And right now, I'm sort of on hold waiting for the the remainder of any of the evaluations or. or remuneration associated with those. And then in October, the Board of Selectmen, in September and October, the Board of Selectmen would have an opportunity to go through with the department heads and go through the changes and their priorities and what they're trying to accomplish this year. And then in November, be looking to do, you know, a submission to the Budget Committee and some type of presentation to them of the selectman's budget. And the only thing I would say that, that might change in this is, I know the Budget Committee likes to do, you know, their, you know, their outside agencies and get those people in early. So, so I'll be sure that, and with the absence of secretary for them, that if there is a schedule that the Board of Selectmen are aware when these people are coming in, so that if you want to attend those meetings or watch them afterwards, you know, when they're, they're making their request to the town, that you have that opportunity. Other than that, the, you know, it'll just be really keeping track very closely through the end of the year. We're looking at a sizable increase in the school tax this year, and that was because of the big decrease that we had had. And I'm hopeful that the, that the school board may use some of the funds from the sale of Union Sanborn. If some of those funds, depending upon how they've been used, they can be used to bring down the rate a little bit. That's something that I've talked to a couple of people about. I am a member of the Funding Formula Committee that we're going through right now. And I've also made a push to place less emphasis on equalized value and more on average daily membership, which will also benefit the town. And, and I think, just as an aside, in case you do get asked about this, but I think one of the main reasons that we have to look at is, in the past, if you recall, our meeting with Avatar and the, and DRA Commissioner, when there were issues of, with the fire district and valuations in Northfield. If you recall that meeting, that, that the three different towns, each have different assessors, each have different schedules, and each are going to vary to some degree. So, so I think the fact that most people recognize that there are, valuations are imperfect, and that, that that's not the best way to track, you know, what is the true cost of a school system. It's, it's much easier to say, this many kids came from this town, this many kids came from this town, this many kids came from the third town, and look at what the costs are that way. I don't think we'll ever get to 100% ADM, but I do think we can move from the 70/30 where we are now, closer to, say, an 80/20, which is what I'm trying to push towards, so that over five years, maybe we can start at 75/25 and move to that 80/20. And that would mean, that would mean, and keep in mind, we have had more kids over, over time, and the way Department of Education looked at the formula, they also froze it during, during COVID, so that the number that you started with, it froze in time, and then all of a sudden, they unfroze it and you bumped up so many kids. So, so any of that, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, that's, that's a priority of mine, because as I look at our town budget, and I look at the impact of the tax rate on citizens, they're gonna, if, if it were as it's projected to be today, it's going to be tough to swallow at the end of the year. So, so any of that, that's what I have. So if you have any suggestions for '24, if there are other things that you'd like to see or feel like we don't, you know, give enough time to or visibility to, please let me know, and I'm sure I can work it out. But I'm working very hard and updating everything right now.
Sounds good. It's a lot for us to digest. I have a question, and it's not about the budget, but you had said something about the formula, and I'm not really, I've never been on the Formula Committee, and I never want to be, thank you. Do they take into consideration, is it just children, or is it children and special needs children? Is it just children?
It's, as far as I know, as of October 1st of each year, they come up with the membership, so it's all, all kids. Yeah, all kids. Yep, yep, as far as I know.
There's just a difference of cost, that's all. It's just a difference of cost involved.
So what, what the district is reimbursed for kids is different from what the actual number of children attending school is. Right, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks so much.
Okay. We only have three minutes, and we have to open up the public hearing, so we're not going to go further on just yet. We have paving bid to open up. So... Think about the budget, what Tim has given us, and maybe on August 31st, we have some ideas of, do we want to go with it? For this, I can pass them down. Joe, you want some?
No, thank you.
You want some?
Thanks, Pat.
Was told no chocolate, so they all fell asleep on me last week, so. All right, time being 5:30, we'll open up the public hearing to accept $20,000 from Belknap County. The first in my 15 years. The time being 5:30, and in accordance with our, say, 31:95-B, I'd like to open the public hearing to accept $20,000 of unanticipated monies distributed to the town of Tilton from Belknap County. The county administrator advises that the only perimeter on the town is that the money be spent on the provision of public services. Questions from the Select Board? Go ahead, Joe.
What are public services? Doesn't that apply to almost everything we do here?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to get that straightened out.
Anything. Kevin's vying for that money. I can tell, because he's right there going. Questions from the audience?
I guess, I, I know.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, John.
How did that money come about?
From their ARPA money, correct?
It was?
No, okay.
Unexpended?
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
They wanted to be clear about that, because...
I'm sorry, there was a question about whether I should make a motion or not. It's just an open.
Yeah, well, would you please finish your answer?
Go ahead.
They wanted to be clear that it was not ARPA funds, because I wanted to make sure that there would be no restrictions or any additional reporting on our end, because it's coming from another party passed on to us. So there was some back and forth between myself and the county administrator, and she made it clear that this was excess funds from Belknap County that they are giving to each community. And in fact, I'll tell you, and Meredith, that they had posted the notice saying it was ARPA money that we were going to be accepting last week, and we had to stop the public hearing because we had posted it wrong. So it's not ARPA money.
Got it. All right, sad answer to that question. Okay. Do we have any questions from online folks? Go ahead, Joe.
County sent this money back to all the communities within Belknap County?
Every community, with the exception of Laconia and Guilford, received $20,000. Guilford and Laconia got an additional amount, a little bit more than the other towns.
Is there a deadline on when the decision, how we'd spend it, be made, or?
No, no, there was no deadline, but the, and we've already, we've already gotten the check, right? Yeah, we've already gotten the check, so there's no, there's, they didn't put a deadline on it.
Okay, Joe?
I'll make a motion to accept that $20,000 in county surplus monies for the town of Tilton.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the funds from the Belknap County to us, and seconded any discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But that will close the public hearing? Do I have to open the bid exactly at 5:45?
I know, I'm...
Jeannie?
I know, I, yeah, I was just looking at the agenda. No, I, I don't think so.
I can open it.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll open the paving bids. There were, you solicited five bids, and only two came in.
Again? Always. Robbie Doyle.
This opening, I'm not, I'm, just the envelope, so I can return this...
Woman.
Instrument.
It's a tool.
Yeah. Okay.
Welcome.
All right, the first bid is from Porter Paving. In my understanding, is Kevin would like an answer, because time is of the essence at some point tonight. There's a part one and a part two to this. Part one is $65,830, and part two is $39,040, for a total of $104,870.
Read those numbers.
Yep. The part one is $65,830, part two is $39,040, for a total of $104,870,000.
That was Porter?
Yes. And this is from R&amp;D Paving. Part one is $69,795, and part two is $45,500, for a total of $115,295. We do not, at this time, have copies, but I'll pass these around and make sure you don't lose those.
I missed something somewhere, but part one, part two. As a casual observer of the tape, I'm feeling like maybe they won't understand what part one and part two are.
You want to answer that, Kevin, or I can read the part one, part two if you want? You'll have to come up. Yep.
Hi.
Hi, Kev.
So, part one and part two. Part one, this paving project has handled like the other paving projects I've done in the, in the past. Part one is full reclamation, fine grade, compact with water. Binder applied for the first phase, for part one. The binder is set, is left in place for the winter, and then part two is next spring, where the, any shimming is done, where the binder has settled, or compacted to where it's not level anymore. So there's a shim that's applied if necessary. And then the wearing course, the top layer is applied. Those are the two separate, part one and part two. And that's how it's broken out. I would like to mention, R&amp;D was the only one that came out and inquired about the project with me, and actually walked the project with me. There is some extensive handwork on both roads, because, first, Grant Street, the, the, the elevation of the road is quite drastic, so there's a lot of handwork involved on the edges. Morrison Ave, at the bottom of Morrison Ave, there is also a 50-foot berm that needs to be applied to keep water from running into the guys, into the residence's first-floor garage. As I heard the bid reading, or the bid announcements, that additional money from R&amp;D, I would equate to the additional handwork that Porter Paving is not aware of.
Oh, we can't, I'm going to stop you there.
Okay, that's an assumption, that's correct.
Correct.
So, going back to what I had mentioned, R&amp;D was the only one that reached out to me and actually walked the project. The other company did not.
But we don't know if they walked it on their own.
Exactly.
They both bid on the same specs, or are those?
Yes, the same.
What are the two roads that you're doing this year?
Morrison Ave and Grant Street.
Grant Street.
Yes. I believe it's two inches of base and inch and a half wearing course, top layer. The base is a winter mix. They mix a little bit more sand in with it. Better compaction, stands up to the colder weather a little bit better. The, um... The water company is in there now, so there's another difference with this project from past projects. It's not going to be open for any length of time. They are too... any length of time. They are to reclaim compact with water, fine grade, and pave all at once. There's going to be no, no roads left open for any length of time.
They do the regrading. I know right now, like where you spoke of that berm, the problem was is that they some places it's pretty thick and that was what was causing the thing. I, and they were having problems with the berm with when they originally put it down because there are roads like this and it goes down, that their cars were scraping. So if they were to put a new berm in there as opposed to regrading it all the way, they'll take care of that. So I don't know what those clearances formulas are, but
I remember that when that berm was applied, it was when the previous director was here. That was a quick fix for the water in the basement. It did work, yes. But I definitely wanted to have it incorporated in this project as well. It's always been my philosophy to do it right the first time and be done with it.
Wood?
Hard to make a decision on these two bids because one of them is more specific than the other about what it involves.
I have not seen the bids, so I don't know.
$13,000 difference is a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
That said, if they get over there and discover what we really need costs an extra $13,000. Are they eating that money or are they going to try and come at us to get more money? Because it has to be done to a certain specification.
That's correct.
Pardon?
It is a bid, I mean
They were both
Yeah, I'll do it for $84,000.
There was
The bid. You get what you get.
They both bid on the exact same specification.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So they were given that RFQ or whatever. RFQ?
Oh, the RFP.
RFP.
Request for proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not a part of this, though. I didn't see the RFP specifically.
That's what they, they are bidding on the exact same thing.
Do you have the original RFP that they bid on?
Not with me, no. I know I requested an answer tonight. I do believe that we can wait until the next meeting to make a, to make a decision. I would, I would like to mention that paving companies as well as other companies, other construction entities this year have been majorly affected by the rain. So a lot of projects have been put off or adjusted to later in the year. So I anticipate paving projects going right up until the close of the asphalt factory.
Is there a deadline for when we have to respond on it? The only thing I was considering is if he said, well, we haven't heard from you, so we'll go withdraw or, you know, that's
Well, I can reach out to the companies that responded and let them know that we need the two weeks to review and make a decision.
I don't how does that work with an open bid when the director goes to both, both parties?
Not trying to play Let's Make a Deal. He's just informing them that it'll be two weeks before we make a choice.
As long as what is said to one is exactly what is said to the other.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
We can't have any
No favorites.
We can't have any exception of, of, of favoritism in any which way or anything said that may be misconstrued.
Just two things. One, and I may have missed it, is there a concern that we won't be able to get the work done this year if you wait two weeks? And then the second thing, I can always reach out to them as the town administrator so that Kevin's out of that and there's no, you know, worry about that issue.
Kevin had suggested that we could wait until August 31st meeting.
Okay.
To get the question.
No, they're both very reputable companies.
Very, both very reputable. John, go ahead.
I would be best if we just sent them a letter that we received them and we requested in writing and then nobody can claim anything.
What was the question?
Or we just take the low bid, right here and right now. It's $13,000. The low bidder knows what he's bidding on. Is there any doubt in your mind that that individual could do?
No, I mean, they're, they're, like you said, a reputable company.
They're both, they're both
I
Both good, yeah.
When when the transition between the previous director and myself transpired, Porter Paving was contracted to do the old Route 3 paving near Winter Square Market. So I have worked with them on that previous project. They are a capable company, absolutely. So if
Two of the best.
So if, if, if if we were to decide on lowest bid tonight, I'm okay with that.
Make a motion to accept the lower two bids from Porter Paving.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Discussion.
$13,000. Porter Paving's a reputable company. They've been around since I was a kid, literally. They have a history to stand on. I feel like they could do the thing and do the job and a lot of money to save for the taxpayers.
Take a look at that for a second. So that doesn't have any disclaimers or anything that differs from changes from what the RFQ, or if
I'm not sure what he is.
Quick look and I think it'd be good for it's okay to have Kevin take a look, make sure this, I don't have a copy of the proposal, I mean, yeah, proposal.
Of the RFP.
I don't know if that, so I can't tell if that matches it because he lists that. Is that a copy of? Kevin, that could be, if we accept it and it's not what the RFP is, then we accepted something different than what Kevin asked for.
If they both were sent the exact same request for proposal and they both bid on their request for proposal, how can there be?
They're bidding on that request for proposal.
But they specifically lay out some numbers in here. We're accepting that bid that's written right there.
That's your form, correct?
Based on the RFP.
That, that top sheet, is that your form?
That's my form. That's only part of my form.
Okay.
Couple of sheets missing.
Okay, and that, is that your form on the top sheet?
This here?
Yes.
Yes, that is my form.
And that's what they're bidding on? Okay.
But this doesn't have the particulars that I have written out in the RFP.
Does it state refer to that RFP?
So the contract that we sign with them needs to state as per the RFP. Sent out on blah, blah, blah date.
Could we accept, I mean, vote on and to the motion that it's accepting provides per the RFP?
Yeah, because you, he took the top sheet and gave us the, the final numbers in the bid. That's what he did. Yeah.
But we'll make sure that it's per the RFP.
In the contract, correct.
So could I point out one major difference between these two? Just, just for clarification, okay? This bid, right here, outlines all the square yardage, tonnage, linear footage of grinding that's involved, all of the driveway skirts that need to be tied in by hand.
Does that information come from the RFP?
That's all information I requested from the RFP, that's correct.
So, but did you ask for that to be included in the RFP or did you ask, okay. So you asked for a total amount for the price, correct?
Exactly.
And that's what you got?
I outlined square, square yardage and tonnage in the RFP.
In the RFP?
In the RFP, I outlined
Total squared footage in tonnage?
Yes.
Did you get square footage and tonnage?
This one does not have tonnage.
We're getting into dangerous territory.
We are.
But they're stating that they, they're doing per the RFP?
Exactly. So what they did was
We're getting into dangerous territory. I, I, I'm sorry, we're getting in
I understand.
We're getting into very dangerous territory right here.
Okay. So the RFP asked for a part one total and a part two total. They both
They both gave you a part one and a part two total.
And they both bid on the same exact RFP?
Yes.
Well, again, the contract we sign, if this motion passes, should be as per the RFP.
And we should accept it, provide the contract matches the RFP.
Provide the contract matches the RFP, correct? I
Do you typically you know, if one says it matches the RFP and one says all these numbers, my confusion is do those numbers exactly match where we don't have the RFP? If they both say we are doing it per, exactly per the RFP, then we know that we have that. I mean, I love having that information on there, but if we're not have to provide that there and that. So that's where we could and my concern is we're getting into
They both provide the information I asked.
September.
Yes.
And then it's a squeeze. If we miss out a year, then we won't have that seasonal layover of the hiring of stage one. So if we accepted it, provided that the contract matches the RFP.
Here's a motion on the table. Any more further discussion on the motion on the table? All the question? All those in favor of the motion on the table, which is to accept the lowest lowest bid, correct?
It was the lowest bid, but I don't think that's what I said. I said calling concrete or call
Porter Paving.
Porter Paving, rather.
Porter Paving to accept the bid of Porter Paving. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll proceed.
So in the future with these, it's obvious that we should have a copy of the RFP.
So in the future, we need a copy of the RFP and so we don't know what you're going to
The documentation involved.
Once we open that bid, it, you cannot be influenced in any way possible once we open that bid at all. Particularly the person that's going to be dealing with these people. Because it's legalities here at, once we open the bid, it's legalities of
I understand.
Everything. But we should, if you require them to have this information and this information and they don't have that information, then you can point out I required this information and this information is missing, that you can say. But the information wasn't missing, so
Okay.
That in the future, this is what we need. All right.
Can I mention something?
Yeah, absolutely. I was going to say, do you have any other questions for us?
I'm actually quite thankful that I received two bids because it is very late in the year.
Yep.
And a lot of these paving contractors are booked solid. So in their interest of expediting these projects so that they stay within our timeline for the 10-year road plan, I'm very thankful that we at least got something and then we can proceed.
What about the roads that you're going to continue to do? What the, like, are we going to put those out to bid? For next year or do we not do that now?
We don't do that right now. That'll be done in the spring. I would like to mention that the prospects, the paving that was done last year is scheduled to be completed the last week of August this year. And the water line on Morrison Ave is scheduled to start, the project is scheduled to start next Monday. I have been in touch with Till Northville Aqueduct, keeping those lines of communication open. These projects are proceeding. So it's going to be a busy couple of months, paving and all the other projects we have going on.
One of the things, being so close to Morrison Ave, I get all the I tried to board them over you. And it was reported to me and I don't know if they report to you because they said they need to tell other people, not me. There's sewer leaks over there.
Oh, really?
Up at the corner, they didn't call you or? So behind on the corner where the yellow house is up by the Honda, it was the yard, they, all the kids could smell it out there in that yard as well as the little greenhouse that's real, real close to the road. Fontaine, the one that's
Okay, yeah.
East of Fontaine, not the one west of Fontaine, where it's
East of Fontaine, yeah.
They said that they're getting sewer leaking in their backyard.
Where exactly is this?
Just as you going up around the corner. So if you go up past John's house, Arthur's house?
Yeah.
Arthur's house, John's house.
Right around the corner on the right-hand side.
So you're going, heading east. The
On Morrison Ave, I'm headed east up the hill.
Okay, go past mine.
Yeah.
And then you have the Bob Sharpening.
Yeah.
Okay. Across streets Fontaine and there's a little greenhouse on the right. They have it in their backyard.
Yeah.
And then you go up further where you bear left back to Main Street, that house on the corner over by their shed, they could
Which it goes across the street there.
So
Better tell your neighbors if the water company's going up there, watch their lawns. They still have not repaired my lawn since they let, they did
I'll make sure Johanna knows.
So they, so they spoke to the sewer department already and I, so that's all third-hand, so
Okay.
But what I would suspect is that, because they ran the sewer line down that road, that possibly they left the old sewer lines in the house or didn't cap them off and people might have tied into the old sewer line. That was
I think the sewer, I think the sewer commissioner's had this discussion. I'm trying to remember and it seems to me that house up on the corner on the left side that should go out because that one's gone, right? Is connected to Route 3 and not to Morrison. That's my understanding, but Johanna would know best. I'll talk to her.
My house connects to Morrison. Was a line going out, but there could be old lines that people are still using.
I know what you're saying, but I'll talk to Johanna.
All right, moving right along. Do you have any other questions for us?
Don't want to have to dig the road up again after.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey. Okay, time now being 6:01, we have the land use demonstration presentation by the land use coordinator, Leanne Moynihan and Finance IT Director Tim Pearson. Leanne Moynihan, and Finance IT Director Tim Pearson. This demonstration was scheduled because there were questions from the board about items missing or unable to find on the website.
Thank you. Can you, is the mic working? Okay. Hi. So Tim and I are here tonight just for information for the board. I know there's been some inquiries about the website. I do get calls sometimes from the board and I have emails on how to find certain information on the website. So I thought I'd just give an overview of some of the information that is currently available on the website and through our network related to land use. So I wanted to start out with, I've set up, the sheet that I gave you is not 100% all-encompassing of every line that's on the website, but these are the ones most, most used and related to land use. So on the page I gave you, the first category I started with was parcels and assessing. And the first item under there is the GIS parcel information. So we have that now. It is updated once a year because our maps can only be changed legally once a year as of April 1st. So the GIS parcels, what you can use that for is base maps, you can find zoning maps. We have wetland overlays, boundary maps. You can click on the parcel and get the tax card, which also can give you permit information. You can do measuring of distance and area right on the map if you want to know how far a lot line was. There's a tool on the GIS that helps you do measuring, which is, I use that quite a bit. Also, you can pull in a butters list right from that website. And also make labels. So I try when residents call as well for information. I try and give, help them walk them through the GIS so they can use this at home. It's a great tool if they're looking for their butters, their neighbors, lot lines. Again, it's not legal information. There is a disclaimer on the GIS that this is not a legal survey. These are the tax maps. And you can overlay satellite information and you can actually overlay all these items that I've listed on here. I'm just gonna quickly go through and then we can either, I don't know if you wanna go through like a little demonstration of the GIS right now, or I can go through all of it and then we can click on and show you how we do some of these, how we find some of this information. Do you want, should we do that now? Do you want, or do you want to go through the whole thing? So then another item that's on the website right now, under parcel information is obviously tax cards. Again, you can find those tax cards right on the GIS. But on the website, there's also another category called tax card lookup, which on there, again, you can find all the tax card information. You can find abatement applications and equalization rate. That's all under the assessing information grouping. Next down is the departments. Under departments on the website, we have building department, and under the building department, you can find the inspector's information. You can find building permit applications, driveway permit applications, complaint forms, and all the permit fees. So that's all available under the Department of Building. And again, we can show a couple examples after of how we get to the detailed information. Under land use department, we have two categories under land use primarily. And actually, Tim and I have been working on trying to reorganize some of this so that all the applications and all the documents are kind of grouped together. And so we'll be working on that to make that a little bit more user-friendly. But kind of scattered in, right now, a little bit of a disjoint area is documents and land use applications. And you have master plan, mitigation plan, the groundwater protection overlay plan is there, your subdivision regs, your subdivision applications, your zoning regs. All your land use applications are on there. There's also a link for building forms and a link for DPW forms on the land use. Because a lot of people think, you know, they're gonna get the driveway or some of the building forms from land use, so it links you back to those department locations for their forms. The next category on the website on the menu is boards and commissions. And for planning board and zoning board on that website, on that, if you click on boards and commissions under planning, you will find a meeting schedule. You can find your minutes and you can find the case files. You have to kind of go back to the menu and click on current case, oh, you have it right there. Okay. And then the case files. And those are all the case files. Since I think we started doing that in 2021, I believe. When did we start that? We started putting those up in 21, 20, 20. Mid-20. So since mid-20, when we started doing that, those are the case files that we have on the website with the applications and most of the backup information is on there. And that's pretty much everything that we have available on the website. Oh, and zoning, obviously, yeah, planning and zoning. And zoning is the same thing. We have the case files for zoning on the website. What's available on the network, the internal network, is we have parcel information, which is by map and lot. We have all the map and lots there. And on each parcel, we keep all the permits that are issued electronically, the building inspections that are done on those permits. We have, we'll put COs there. We put, mostly try and put all our information on that parcel electronically now. We will, can have, sewer plans can be on there, DES approvals sometimes are on there, if there are any. We'll put photos on there at times. In the case of, that's an inspection report that is tied to the preserve, I guess, that's an absolute, and those are just the handwritten inspections that are done onsite at location.
Can you show me how to get to there?
On the network. He can show you. It's an internal document. That's on our internal network.
So you can't get, the public can't get to it?
Right, the public can't get to, right, our.
I understand that. I wanna know how I get to it. Thank you.
So those are on the network. Those are our network files. So. I will go through a couple of examples if you're interested. I assume everyone's still.
I had a question. Why is it only allowed for the selectmen or given people? Why is it publicly to access that information?
So the, the last piece, the parcel and lots information, which holds deeds, for example. Deeds are not supposed to be posted on the public website because they're come from the Bellnap. We get them downloaded directly for free from the Bellnap Registry of Deeds. But people are supposed to go, they charge for that. They give us the free access. They don't really expect us to be giving them deeds out on the website. That's under the jurisdiction of the Bellnap Registry of Deeds. If this board wants all this stuff on public, on a website, I've never seen any town put this information, but that's totally up to the selectmen. This can, I'm sure Tim can find a way to put it in there, but it's not usually seen. One of the reasons permits either. You can find a permit, if a permit has been issued on the public website, you can go to the tax card and it'll say the permit number, when it was issued, what it was for, on any tax card that you look on the public website. Anyone can find that. If you want the actual permit application that was written, that's not posted on a website. Again, I've never seen towns put those on the website. It has information of personal phone numbers, emails, that type of thing, which I don't know if everybody who pulls a permit expects that personal information to be put on the website. It is public record. I guess if that's what this board would like, I, I mean, I don't control the web. He can post anything, I guess, on the website. Most of it is written by Tim, how this goes up there. But I've never seen that type of information put on an open website, but it can be accessed through our office. So if that's what this board is really looking for, is that our internal files that are, that are actually in file cabinets upstairs, usually locked. So, because we don't usually have people just going through our files. But we can put as much information on the website as this board would like. But that's usually the reason why.
You don't have them on, on your drive?
Yes. All this is on, all this is, this is the information that we put on.
Your internal.
Well, internal, the network drive, the town drive. It's not like my personal drive. It's the town's, so anyone in the town.
Personal, I meant land use.
Land use, and anyone can access it in the town hall.
In the town hall. So, okay.
It's just not on the.
Just for clarification.
Right, it's not out on the web. So, I mean, was that really the only concern? Was that group of information? Should I continue and show examples of GIS? You're not, you're interested in seeing that as well? Oh. All right, so I guess we'll go back to the GIS. And we'll start with, up in the left-hand corner, it says find a property. I guess we can start with 725 Laconia Road, which is, yes, the preserve is an easy one to pull up. And actually, just recently, I think yesterday, it's been updated, I believe, 2023 because that lot 27, which it's highlighting there, has been merged. And so we just finalized and approved the changes from last year with the, with choreographics. So that's been updated. So that's parcel 27. See all the parcels around it. You can zoom in. If you go on the left, the layers, you can overlay wetlands maps. I guess that's an example. So if you went down to. Is that it, Tim? There's a wetland up there. In green, there's a wetland over there. Some areas you'll see larger pieces of wetland. Kind of can give you an idea. Again, this is not a soup, there's, there's a lot of wetlands showing there. It's just an overlay. Again, there's no dimensions, there's no, but, you know, it's a helpful tool if you're looking for something quickly in a parcel to see if there's a big piece of wetland on the, on the property. So we use that sometimes. Zoning maps, you can click on the zoning map and it will, there's a colored overlay section that will quickly show you the last one, Tim, way down at the bottom, bottom?
Oh.
Zoning maps, there's your zoning maps. There's residential, commercial. You can see the whole area and what it abuts. It's kind of a nice bird's eye view of the whole community by, by zoning district, wetlands. I said, you can see a boundaries. Another nice feature is if you go over to, I can take that off so you can get rid of the colors. And then if you go over here to the right, there's a menu bar. And you click on that and you hit base maps. Hit other and you can go over to satellites and now you'll see, and you can zoom in on that and now you can see the property with the houses on it. Again, people call me and say, you know, I live at, you know, Morrison Ave and my neighbor and my house is, or I wanna build a garage. You can quickly kind of pull it up and say, okay, well, your house is, you know, I can kind of see where they're talking and how close the boundaries are. Again, it's not legal. Now, if you have that house and, zoom in that house again, Tim, as an example. Yeah, anyone, sure. I taught you how to do this today. And then you want to know how far that garage is from the boundary line, or that house is now from the boundary line, you have a measuring tool. Remembered it? You learn well. And then take the measuring tool and you put it in feet and you can just click on the boundary line and measure it to the end of the garage or whatever. You can click on it. There you go. Click at the end. Tells you it's 61 feet. So you can do that. You can also do the same thing with measuring area. You can go to the measure area, make a box and you can measure the area of the lot. You know, obviously, or just click on the card. If you double-click on the property, you gotta. Wait, how you doing the area? Nice job. You wanna show everything you learned? So yeah, now you have the area of .03 acres. And then if you just double-click on the property, it'll bring you the property card. And there's your property card. And you can go click on the Avatar property card over there without changing, going to another location in the website and pulls up your card. You can see if there's any, sometimes it's a current use question. I can look quickly and see under land was current use. Owner information, notes from the assessors. You can see building permits. I guess we can look here for our building permits. I don't know if there are any on here, but if, yeah, the permits would be there if they had pulled a permit in the last 20 years. I don't know when they, when, how long you've had Avatar. So that pretty much, I think, oh, a couple, one other thing you can do from here, real quick, is just your butters. It is over on the left, Tim, where the little houses are, on the left, under the address. No, up, 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 the little house, nope. You almost were there. Go back. Nope, left. I'm looking left on the screen. I apologize. Yeah, and then there's a little.
It disappeared. There, pop down that menu, pop that.
Yeah, you need to pull it down. Yeah, there you go. See the little houses? Yeah. And there's your butters list. And you put in the buffer, you know, how far you want it to go out. And it'll pull your butters list anyway. And you can do a PDF and it'll just print out on a butters list for you on any piece of property. And then it, once you do it, if you say, well, I didn't want this property, you can click on it to get it out.
Can you tell how much, how, how? What requirements you are for the butters, whether you want 50 feet, 100 feet?
Well, you, you have to put in feet in the map to get it. But the requirement usually that I'm working with for zoning and planning isn't a distance requirement. It's an actual boundary requirement. So what I do is I'll put in 100 feet and then I'll look and see like this piece over here outside, you know, might not be touching. So you can click it off and take it off, or you can add one manually. So you just check to make sure everything boundary-wise is covered and then you can just click out or click in a piece before you print your final copy. But yeah, it doesn't work by feet, but the map works by feet. Any questions on what the GIS can do?
Let's say. Like pick any recent besides the sort of, you have the automotive place or even like the landscaper. And you see that there's a meeting coming up and you're a resident that's, you know, can short notice sometimes. And you say, I wanna see what they're, they're planning. What, what it is. So I can see whatever their, how would they get that?
Yep, that's, we showed, yep, the case file he's asking about. So that's not in the GIS, that's in, that's under boards and commissions, under your planning board. That's a planning board case, so that's on the map. So you would go. So you're gonna go down to boards and commissions. To, yeah, boards and commissions, and then here are all the cases, so. So there's 725 Laconia Road. Those are all the preserve that just came to the board and by date, right? And then you can click on.
Go one that's, you know, like the last.
77 Winter Street.
Last month.
Yeah, or 77 Winter Street. That was, that's the one, Colter up on somewhere, they're building that house, that subdivision. On Winter, 75. You approved the two-lot subdivision. Across the middle school. That, I mean, that's that, you know, that's that application. We just had the preserve that was the one last month.
There's no sketches or plans with that?
Yeah, yep. So plant like Haven Grove, look at Haven Grove, that, that's.
Oh, let's go up to the top last month.
711, Haven Grove, right there.
Let's see, just go. The 246 or, you know, some.
246 Laconia Road, try that one.
Yeah, anything right before the serve.
Yeah, it's the same thing. One's the application, one's the plan. I think he was asked about the plan. So click on the site, yeah, click on the plan, I guess. I think that's what he wanted to see. So there's the plan for John Bernard's property. And then the previous one you would click on to get the application.
So when I looked at the recent one for the landscaping company, I didn't see any plans with it.
The landscaping, GTM?
Yeah.
For zoning, that's zoning.
Yeah, so how would you, if you.
Yeah, same thing. I assume I put zoning up, yeah. Yeah, go to zoning. I think GTM's up there. GTM. Let's see, are they on there? Yeah, 142 East Main, is that one you're talking about? Yeah, the first one. Click on that one. There's an application. Now scroll down. And. There's Francois Pellerin, right? There's his application. It gets scanned everything in one piece. So I think the plan is below here. Butters list. Oh, there's no plan on that one. Okay. The plan then gets scanned together.
Or if you go to.
Well, because he didn't really submit a plan because he was looking for change of use. But if you wanna go to the GIS, you can see his piece of property that I, that I made a picture of, the piece of property. Is that what you were looking for?
Thought he submitted a plan with it.
Well, zoning board. They came for change of use.
So if you look at, let's say, the one for the planning for the automotive, like Mike's old place.
Yep. Well, they didn't submit, well, they didn't submit a site plan. They were coming to see it for change of use for, that's not up there because that was a change of use. We don't have a site plan application from them.
So pass files on that? Would you be able to get, pull up?
I'm sorry, John?
Pass files on that? Are they available?
Only since I've been doing it. This was never done before. So I don't think, there was never anything on the website that I'm aware of. Tim can talk to that. I don't have any, I mean, this is only what I have. Like the old, old files, like 2004 files, they're in the file, but they're not electronic that I know of, unless we scanned all those old files.
Are they, are those on there now or? Most of the things in the planning, are they all have the plans with them on that?
Most of those have plans. I mean, if you look on, go to, back to the planning case file. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Old stuff, yeah. Where's, so how do you get to that? Where is that? That publicly accessible one? Thanks.
So in the current file, current cases, I think you want to see. Yeah, for planning. You want to know if we put plans up. And like, yeah, so see, I see application, drainage report, traffic study, site plan, application, plan, application, plan, application, plan. So the applica-
Now where's that? That's not the same one that we were looking at before, right?
Yep. This is the Planning Board. So the Planning Board has a case file and the Zoning Board has a case file. So this is the Planning Board case file. You go into, under Boards and Commissions on the website and right under it says case file for planning. And then you go to Zoning Board on the Boards and Commissions. And we can put it somewhere, case files, and then Z case files.
So if you, well, I guess what I'm referring to is if you look at the files for the applications that you had there, they don't, do they all show the plans? Like if somebody's going to Planning Board or just application?
Oh, no, just the plans that they submitted for that application. Not the whole history of that site wouldn't then get loaded onto the website. Is that your question?
No, if we go back to the one that we were looking at, that we opened up and I said, let's skip down to the first one. No, we're in different, you're in a completely different
Nope, we're in the same place.
We're gonna need to wrap up soon. So, yeah, ask your questions, John. Go ahead. Finish that up.
If you could go back to the application files where we tried to look up the one for the ones on Morrison Ave for the GTM, there were other applications on there. I didn't see.
The old, those old cases on GTM, GTM applied prior years.
Or the other applications that were on there. I didn't see them on there either.
What other applications? I'm not sure.
You had a whole list, right?
Yeah. You could click on any of them and get them.
Yeah. So if we pull down to
Gaslight Village.
You know, let's go
Which one do you want her to click on?
Maybe the next one down from that one, the top one that we had, working from the top down.
Next one down, Maple Court.
We got Maple Court.
Now you're in Zoning Board, right? You're in Maple Court. Okay. These are Zoning Board. GTM was at Zoning Board. Is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Well, that's okay. I haven't seen.
So there's a Maple Court application. There's what they submitted for other properties with multiple units. There's their plan for Maple Court. Abutters list. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So any of the cases, you should be able to find everything that was submitted with that application. Now, I don't always put, if I do further research sometimes for the Board and I find an old plan, that's not always put up there. Sometimes I'm worth it. Now I can start trying to put that up there. Sometimes I'll find more information before, like GTM, I pulled their old application and brought it to the zoning boards. They could see what they were approved for before. Or I'll do an aerial photo from GIS because if they don't submit anything, so they can, so the Board can kind of see where it is. I don't scan that GIS and put it up here because it's available to everybody right on the GIS if they want to see the plan. I can start adding more of that information on there, I guess, but I don't know how much. I think this, you know, just gives people the case file. And then, you know, there's other places to do more research. We certainly can expand on this, but this is, you know, was our starting point of getting information out there. If there's anything more you want up there, we certainly can add it. Does that answer your question, John? You still seem a little perplexed. Yeah? I mean, is that good? I mean, is that good that the cases are there? I'm not really, I'm not reading you, right? I'm not sure if you want the cases there or you don't want the cases there.
Well, it wouldn't be my personal choice. I know that sometimes if there's a meeting coming up, it's very difficult to find the information for that meeting because if it's posted like 24 hours before
Well, it's not usually. It's usually posted 10 days in advance. Yeah. But how, where else would you want to put it? Well, because the information on the website, though, where, where else would I put it?
It's just seemed that many pieces are scattered all over. And if you don't know how to navigate, you're, you use it a lot.
Right. And I try and educate people every time. Well, the letters, well, actually, John, what we do is in the abutter letters, which are the abutters like for zoning, we tell them, we give them the link right in the letter to where to find the case information. So if you're in a butter, you would know, you know, you can go right here. It says right on the bottom of the letter. To find more information, click on this link and to get the case information. So abutters would know. Or if a butter's call, we always say, go to the website. We tell them, just go to Boards and Commissions, look at case file and click on it.
A file is sent out, a butter's information is sent out, there's a link that they can get to obtain more information?
This link, the link to this. I mean, it's not a link. There obviously is a piece of paper. You're not clicking on electronically. But the link is there.
Extra link.
Right. The, the link is written and they can just type it in and get to this. I sent you the link on an email once. You asked me for this link and I emailed it back to you. But anyway, that's what we do. If people call and say, hey, I'm a butter, can I come in and see the case? We say, yeah, you can, but I can tell you, you can just click on Boards and Commissions, go to Zoning Board Case. We walk them through it. They click on and they're like, oh, great, fine, I'm, I'm good. And it's actually a little better because a lot of people have a hard time reading the maps, especially the small maps that get submitted. This way, they can click on it, they can zoom right in. And, and it's nice. I mean, we try and make it not scattered. I mean, it's under Boards and Commissions and Planning.
If you had a case that was coming up for planning or ZVA, this link available on it where it says on the agenda or
No, I mean, if I had an abutters notice, I'd show you. It's just, yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is you don't always have to be only in a butter to want to seek that information.
Well, no, but it's right here. It's also on the website. I mean, if someone's that adamant about always watching what's going on on planning and zoning, I mean, I would think they would know, you know, once they learn it's there, they know where to go every month and see what's coming up because it's always there.
They could just click on
I mean, in hooks that I do the same thing. I'm interested in what's going on in my town. I just go to the Planning Board website and look for the case files and I click on and I see what's, what cases are, are coming up. Once you know where the cases are, it's, it's a one-click, right? So people that are interested don't even really need to, all you need to do is click on the case files every, every once a month and see what's coming up. Because they're put on, they're put on at the same time that they're abutters because I want to, I want that there before the abutter letter goes out, which is two weeks in advance because I want it there before they see their letter.
Is that all the information that you send out to the Planning Board members?
Yes. Except, I'll just qualify, sometimes I'll get additional information afterwards. I might bring to the Board last minute that I got a map or some information. But yeah, we usually just scan the whole application and put it up there.
Okay.
Okay?
I ask that because in case there's somebody else listening on that.
And, and a lot of people, it, it's been good because we, we teach a lot of people this. Every day someone calls about it and we're always kind of, rather than just give them the answer, we try and walk them through how to find it themselves so they can continue to, to find the information.
You know, possibly, if a lot of people call and ask for that, that possibly we can make a demo that people could click on how to find information. And, and then it would alleviate people calling you.
Well, right. Well, that's why we train them.
You know, they could stop it and try it.
Well, that's exactly why we try and teach people, right. And chances are same thing. It's not, we don't want to just give them the quick answer, but we try and, it's like a, like a kid. You try and make them learn how to do, do it themselves.
But if, if you had that readily available, sometimes it's difficult to reach people and they
Happy to do it. Yeah, we could do that. We could do a video of that.
You know, or, you know, a screen record of how to find it, like a little PowerPoint type thing.
Yeah, yeah. That would be, yeah, sure. That's a good idea. Any other questions, though? I think we're kind of, are we running out of, running over our, our allotment?
All set with Leanne. Thank you very much. I, for one, certainly have learned something different. I appreciate it.
Are we taking comment?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. We should take a, let's see, we're running over time, but I'll take a couple of quick questions because we're running over time, Nate.
Yes, um, sorry. I just, so one improvement could be the agenda link on the public notices and agenda page on the website. Have that go to a Google Drive folder with all of the, the documentation that will be at the upcoming meeting or relevant documentation or, you know, links to the specific websites, just so it's, it's more collected. Alternatively, on the, the minutes page, there could be a, like, pre-read section with a document or a folder link as, as well as, you know, having the documents and videos available after the fact.
Actually, I have a thought on that, Nate. As you said that, I was thinking, I wonder if maybe we could put the link for the cases on the, where we go minutes, agendas. Where you click on that, maybe in the next, like where we put the video box, how to click on the video, how to click on the cases, right on the, because people, you say, go to Planning Board Agenda. Then you have to be linked to the agenda necessarily. It can just be linked, Agenda Minutes and have another box. Would that probably be easier? I don't know. That's really a Tim, Tim question. But then it would be on that Board men, you know, all the Board meeting page.
That's a great suggestion. Yep.
I don't know.
We'll look into that, Nate.
Thank you. I'd also be willing to sit down with Tim at some point to help with website updates if there's any, you know, volunteer opportunity to do that. I've chatted with him on a couple of things, you know, broken links and whatnot already.
Okay. We'll talk to Tim about that. Thanks. Appreciate it. Anybody else online that wants to add in? Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate your help. Thanks. Okay. Time being 6:30. We have selectmen's reports. Joey, you're first.
We have no new report for this week.
Okay. Catherine, you're next.
Nothing new. I guess I took questions. Probably can wait for the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay. John, you're next.
So somebody asked, I guess, a couple of times, and it's third-hand and they tell me this, that they're looking for the specs from Morrison Ave and they've requested it, but they haven't been able to get it.
Specs meaning the, the RFP?
Yeah.
For the road, for the asphalt?
Yeah, for the project, yeah.
Okay.
Don't we usually, when we go out for an RFP, don't we usually post it on the website?
We usually post it on the website. We've done that in the past many times.
Other words, it said, we're looking for bids for paving, RFP.
Yep.
Or we're looking for whatever, RFP.
Do you have specific people that are asking for it? So if we just email you the specs, you can get it to them?
I'm not, no, I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
They need to learn to go directly to Town Hall, but they've asked, or they stated they asked a couple of times and they haven't gotten it.
So in the future, we should just
They can tell you who and that.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
And the next thing is, is I think we need to make it official that all public meetings and hearings will be posted on the calendar. So I think any publicly noticed meeting, if it's required to be publicly noticed, that would be on our website. That's one of the official, if it's a committee or something that doesn't typically publicly notice, then I know an issue with that, but.
Then whose responsibility is it if they change the location of the meeting or they change the meeting or the time of the meeting or the week of the meeting or whatever? And say, oh, there's not enough information for us to have a meeting this week. It's, we're not having a meeting. Whose responsibility is it to get to that person to say, we're not having a meeting that, that week. It's put off for the following week? So
Well, if you post it in the newspaper at the same time, if you can take the, the information, spend the time to post it in a newspaper and send out that to a newspaper. Why can't you click on our website?
Are you only saying the ones that are required to post in a newspaper? So planning and zoning?
That it?
That's the only ones that are required to post in a newspaper?
Right. Planning and zoning or if, if the town has a
Public hearing.
Public hearing, like for the ARPA, not the ARPA funds, but the Bellknap County Funds, that had to be posted in the newspaper. But there are different boards and committees and commissions who sometimes forget to post things on the website. So it's a good question to ask, who's responsible for that? The individual boards, committees and commissions, if they don't post.
And that's why I said all legally posted meetings.
Okay. Tim, you had a question?
Yeah, I just had a comment that all the agendas are live documents that are editable by permission. So for most of, for the people that are updating those are the people responsible for those boards and commissions typically, except for when you get to some of the other outside agencies that are outside or certain ones, say Parks, they may contact Gail and then Gail would do it. But it's all permission-based. And once someone has edited or copied and pasted in the agenda, it's live within just a few minutes. And it's always the same document. So they can post it in. They could And it's always the same document. So they can post it in, they could, uh, save it as a PDF and email it to the board or they can, um, they can do whatever, or make changes to it. So it's always live.
So that, so that calendar, that could be done then?
So nobody seconded your motion. Do you want to expand on the, say something? Okay. To expand on that to, to specifically say the, the meetings that you want it to, to specify the legal meetings that you needed to.
Publicly noticed meetings, which would.
So, well, that means all meetings, municipal meetings, because under 91A, you're required to post your meeting.
Because we publicly notice senior center, executive meetings. I mean, we publicly noticed them that. And if you, we just canceled that August meeting because there was nothing to have on the agenda. So.
So if you want meetings that are required to post unnoticed in a newspaper, that's different than.
That's the ones I'm.
Okay, then that would just be the, the ones that are required to, then I would specify in your motion that it would be the ones legally, uh, needing to be posted in the, in the newspaper for.
Have to require the two places to be.
Right.
One of them in the newspaper.
One of them in the newspaper.
Second.
Okay. So the motion is to publicly.
Include.
Meetings that are required to be posted in the newspaper.
Put them on the website, correct?
Include them on the website.
To include them on the website. The ones that are publicly required to post, uh, to put in the newspapers.
He wants them specifically in the calendar on the website.
So the motion is to post on the website calendar the meetings that require us to post in two places, one including the newspaper, our, the agenda. So that would be planning and zoning and occasionally the selectmen's meeting, if there's a hearing that we need to post for a public hearing. So that needs to be, uh, pub, put on the, a website calendar posted. Do I, and Catherine Dawson seconded it. So for discussion, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Go ahead.
Do we actually have a calendar on the website?
We do. Uh, the, the issue though.
I was just there and I saw no calendar.
It's the first.
Look under.
You click on meetings and agenda, the button underneath.
You can print it.
Let's see. I know where to find the information, but when I open up that page, I have to then go looking for the calendar. It's not like there's a calendar just on the front page.
Um, look at, if you see agendas and calendars.
I see a pa, I see a calendar here, but it's not on the first page. Uh-uh. Got to look for it.
Well, and you can have a calendar on the first page if that's what you want, but somebody's got to say what you'd like.
Hang on. But it's a link to it. It's the, right underneath the town picture.
Yeah, meetings and agenda, there's a button.
And you click on that and the calendar pops up.
Yeah.
It's the first thing on the.
A question for you though. So what I was talking about with the agenda page, which we're, you to read it, it looks like a document and it has, you know, the name of the board and so on and so forth, where they're meeting, what time, and then all the agenda items. That's different from what you're talking about with a calendar. In the calendar, there's a place where you can put text or you can put a link, but, uh, that's, that's not the same thing I was talking about just a few minutes ago. So I guess I, my question would be, who are you going to hold responsible for updating those? And, uh, is it just in the calendar? So if the agenda isn't updated, but in the calendar, you've got the text in there, that's okay? So I guess I'm a little, I'm a little confused.
Let me give an example. So last week, um, or actually it was Tuesday, you. Let me tell you, there's some kind of meeting going on, um, which was CBA on a piece of property. So I go to the town website. I click on meeting schedules and agendas. I go to zoning board, I click on that. And it lists it. And it tells you about a meeting and then it tells you to go to a third page, town's website on public hearings and agenda page. Go to the public hearings and agenda page and it shows what was last month, not what's going on today.
I saw that too. Go ahead, Tim.
So you don't know how to find, so you figure, oh, there isn't a meeting because there's nothing posted.
It wasn't updated.
Yeah, it, I, I, I think this was just simply a mistake somebody made.
But what I'm doing is making, but the rule, what was told, it doesn't have to be there because it was posted at town hall and it was also posted in the newspaper. So we don't have to post it there. Yeah. So that what I'm seeing is if you got the thing that says that's where it is. You know, that's where people are very accustomed to doing it. Other people clicked on it. I think you said you clicked on it and didn't see it.
Well, I was, I, just one other thing I was going to say is that many times, uh, like those calendar entries, those are set up based on what the, what the regular meeting schedule is, but sometimes there'll be a cancellation of a meeting and it'll still be on the calendar entry. Uh, so there are times when things get missed because.
And it would still be in the newspaper too.
It's a communication thing. Well, if it's a, if it's a newspaper thing, yeah. But anyway, I guess what I was trying to say is that the, they're two different things and that it can be, you know, sometimes it can just simply be missed. And I can tell you, there's been a lot going on over at town hall recently. So.
These are, these are legal meetings and people, the public has insight that they'd like to add to it or discuss it. But they go to the place where they always find those and it's not there and there is no, nothing posted for it.
Yeah, it was, I think it was a, it was a one-time oversight, you know.
I've seen it a bunch of times. Yeah.
I think one of the problems is, is that we aren't very good about making sure all of our meetings are posted. And that can be the committees themselves, secretaries or whatever. I know that for park commission, they changed their days to Tuesdays and, uh, that wasn't changed on the website, probably because park commission didn't notify, but nevertheless, it happens. So people go to look for meetings and the correct information isn't there. Probably because we rely on the people that are part of those committees, the chairs, the secretaries, et cetera. And there's so many of them, but we need to do better at making sure our public meetings that are required to be noticed legally are correct in our, uh, town information. And all the places that we post meetings in our town, website and information.
And my specific is to start with, with like the planning and the zoning because those have major impacts.
That's right.
On people.
They have huge impacts.
That should be a priority to start with. The other ones are going to be problematic. I can see that.
Do we comply with all legal requirements of the state in New Hampshire with regard to noticing our meetings?
We do.
And we're just looking to go above and beyond that.
No, this is where people commonly go. If people.
That's not a state mandate. It's not the law that we put it on our website. That's what I'm trying to ascertain.
It's not.
I'm not arguing a point. I want to find out.
It's not required by law that we put it on the website. Two public places, I think is what it says, doesn't it? Only as John said, planning and zoning must notice it in a newspaper. But then they have to, they could put it out in the kiosk and be covered. But as John said, most people go to our website and look at the agenda page.
Don't buy the sun.
Yeah.
We're spending an awful lot of time on this.
Yes, we are. I call the question.
Right. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Motion? Yes, it's, I, I vote no. So I guess it's a tie. So the motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay. All right. However, we can ask people to be better at noticing it. I think that's what our goal is. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we don't post that because if we post it wrong, then we've given people that things going on.
If we do not post it, then we're not legally, we're not doing, posting it legally then. What are you asking me? On the website?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Are you asking it just for the website? Scott is not here. He'll be here the next meeting. Um. We, uh, this CBA is coming up very soon. Rather get it done sooner rather than later. We need to pick two representatives to the CBA negotiations and are we going to keep the same law firm? Which is, uh, Donahue, Tucker and Giandella. So, um, if we're going to go out for bid on that, we need to do it yesterday. Because we don't have a whole lot of time to send out RFPs and receive them back and get the negotiations done by end of December.
Think we go out to bid for a law firm. It's always good to go out to bid, see if you can find somebody less expensive with experience.
Long time history with Donahue, Tucker and Giandella. They've done well for us in the past. That said, I can't comparatively price, you know, if, if one law firm charges $200 an hour and one law firm charges $400 an hour, are we getting an extra 200 bucks worth out of every hour? I don't know, but without having the figures, uh, it's hard to say. But I like Donahue, Tucker and Giandella. Worked with them on the, uh, um, the MOU for the cable franchising. Kate Miller was the, the lawyer, very knowledgeable and, um, I liked her better than, well, I liked her. What's the right way to put it? Because likinger wasn't the right way to put it. I hated her less. It's a fact.
So you were yes or no?
I'm a, I'm a, I could go either way, but I'm, I like Donahue, Tucker, Giandella.
Done.
I suggest that we go out. We always have gone out and gotten information so that we, we're holding them to a price and holding them to certain requirements. Take it and go it. Very well, me. Choose them, but.
See what's out there.
See what's out there.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Let's go out and see what's out there. Okay. Uh, two representatives.
I'd like to know.
Pick me, pick me.
Motion to choose Pat Constance Dino as one of them.
Yeah, based on her decades of experience.
Thank you.
My decades, but a long time.
Well, one decade anyway.
I said lucky to have her.
Thank you. All right.
They're volunteers. They're volunteers?
I don't know. We'll wait to see if Scott.
We nominate Scott.
Well, Scott was there last year. Scott was with.
I'd like to, but.
Scott was with me last year, last contract.
Yeah, and he was saying something about it last time I saw him, but. I can't speak for Scott. I'd rather have him come back. I think we can wait for that.
Find out what his availability is.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the nomination.
Okay.
All I know is I have no business negotiating a police contract. You know, no.
Neither do I.
Yeah.
So I still make a motion of Pat Constance Dino as one of them.
I'm argumentative and, and, uh, I'm not politically correct sometimes. So it's just as well, those who are, sit in our place or my place.
Okay, I don't hear a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for Pat.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, hearing note, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Okay, Pat's one. All right, moving on. We have a new employee, Judge Gutzman will be joining the Department of Public Works on September 5th. Welcome aboard. Okay, we have a, a discussion on hawkers and peddlers. Did everyone get the email that I forwarded? So on, this was sent to the town clerk tax collector from Paula Penny. Hawkers and peddlers and itinerant vendors. This is from the, uh, newhampshire.gov. Effective September 1st, 2023, the state statute requiring a state license for a hawker and peddler or itinerant vendor has been repealed. Cities, towns may still require a local permit. However, there may, will be no requirement for a state license. If you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call. So Kim's question was, do we still require a local permit? And so I said, well, ours is still in effect until we rescind it. So it's food for thought. Do you want to rescind it if the state rescinds ours? Okay. You're a no. Okay. Well, there's our answer. Okay.
Might need to, do we have to amend our application? So it says.
We might want to look at it.
So it doesn't say state. And that to.
Yes, um, it does said, uh, it's built and zoning, following drivers. Itinerant vendors, hawkers or any other applicants will be required to wear an official photo ID, IDs must be worn. Does we, it does, uh, reference the RSA 641 colon three here. All, everything that it needs to.
Has to meet that or, so there are any state requirements that we didn't list in there, but we assume that.
Copy of state hawkers and vendors permit RSA 320 right here in the second line. So that has to be taken out.
May wish to add something that was.
And then food vendors are required to present copy of additional state permit.
But that might be different.
That, that's totally different. We know that.
Food vendor may be different. That comes from DES.
Right.
Health requirements for those.
Right.
I think.
So we probably should get in touch with this, uh, we probably should want, you know, to get in touch to see exactly what requirements left the food vendor should be stayed on and see what, what kind of, uh, what we take off of the, of the license, the, the permit and what we need to keep on the permit. But the board has voted that we, consensus that we are. the permit. But the board has voted that we consensus that we are keeping it on on it. And I have one more thing here. Last week's meeting, we we it was agreed upon that we were going to create a committee for the island concert. Do we want to put that in motion? Give it a name, how many people, and then put it out there to how many? We don't have to do it tonight, but we should start creating that.
Well, anybody within the sound of my voice who would like to be a part of that effort should call the town hall start the process. I don't necessarily I might have somebody in mind, but I would send them to town hall.
Why don't we create it and give it a name? That way, when they call town hall, they can be directed to an application and fill it out. Why don't we just call it Island Concert Series Committee? Or Island Concert Committee.
Concert Committee. Yeah.
Artwell Concert Committee. Everybody knows that. Different, just.
You know, I like that. Hartwell Concert Committee.
Out for.
Second.
Okay.
There's a motion.
Oh, it is. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded called the Hartwell Concert Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, when they call, they can.
You want a five or a seven committee?
I think you can announce it at the concert. With 10 regularly.
Well, we have one that already asked to be on it.
At least five and seven, if we can get the volunteers.
Okay, got it.
I mean, the more people involved in this, the better it will be.
Yep.
For too long, it's been a one man thing. One, the heart wells and and now it's tightest.
Okay.
Are you going to limit this committee to town residents?
No. Because it's not only town residents that attended.
Just asking because people.
Yeah, I that's my I I I'm sorry. I was very quick to answer that because there's people that attended it for years and years and years that are not in town that are really want this to continue. So, yeah.
It's a regional effort, even though it's in Tilton and it's now solely sponsored by Tilton as an entity. But it's like the senior center. You walk in there, they might be from Belmont, they might be from Sammerton, they might, you know what I mean? And and so having all the help we can get is only going to be a good thing.
Those are the consensus.
And after the concert used to be in Northfield anyway, so.
But, yeah.
So town hall knows it's not limited to residents only.
Right. Okay, having wrapped that up, town administrators report.
Just wanted to go back a minute because John asked a question about how soon did we have to spend those $20,000 in funds from Valnap County? And I wanted to remind the board that in your August 3rd meeting, there was a consensus to earmark the funds for the impound lot. So that's that was what the plan was if.
Sounds like a fine plan.
Okay.
If the chief would like that.
X right in the middle of your forehead.
You're good for that.
Kevin, this is regarding that, just to follow up to the parking behind Casamigos. Kevin has has measured it, says he believes.
Need to talk in the mic. We can't hear you. Thank you.
Kevin has measured behind Casamigos. He says we can pick up an additional nine parking spaces. The snow, there was a question about how the snow would be handled, and he said it would be handled just like the snow is now being handled because they have to plow back there for our parking lot. T hop, he says they plow it and then they remove it. It doesn't doesn't sit there. Kevin is waiting to get the additional paving expense for what that would be to improve that area. That was a question that was asked, so we're still waiting on that information. The impound lot, the cost is approximately 15,150 plus 40 man hours with the DPW. And.
15,000?
Yep, 15,000.
Plus 40 man hours?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Must be a pad too, right?
It's it's with the concrete. It's with the it's with the fencing and creating a sliding fence. And then there's approximately $2,000 for the camera security equipment. And that talks. So that's impound lot. I sent you all an email about the local emergency operations plan. I sent you a copy of the plan and was hoping that the board would sign that tonight because that plan was done back in September of 2022. I need to submit it so that we can get reimbursed. I don't want to miss that deadline. We have been holding on to that plan because the hazard mitigation plan was supposed to be attached to it. The hazard mitigation plan still is not come back to us from Homeland Security. I did talk to the people at the state about that not being attached, and they recommended just submitting the plan as it is right now so that we could get reimbursed. The reimbursement is up to $4,000. So that's a question to the board. I have have the just want to know if the board's willing to sign it or what you want to do. So really, it reimbursed.
Sign it.
Yeah. Okay, so it's dated 2022. You can just.
To chief.
Peace of Chalif.
The FYI, the Tilton Island survey link, it Yep. Okay.
I make a motion to subjugate the board's authority to the chairman for the purposes of signing this form.
Second. Seconded to the chair.
Aye.
Great. All right. And just FYI, thank you to Tim for helping me or actually putting together the Tilton Island survey. This is a follow up to the presentation that was made by Cindy Brockway for the island design. And I did have a meeting with Donna Rhodes. She's writing a article to show up in the Wintis Quammeco. It's not in this week's paper, so I imagine it'll be in next week's paper. Thank you. And people will be encouraged to go to the website, click on the link and give their feedback about what they would like to see happen with the island, the island landscape specifically. McFarland Johnson will be attending the your next meeting to present their proposal, which I sent to all of you before. Present their proposal to the board and answer any questions you might have. And salmon run accident, just I'm sure you're all aware of it. I have filed that with Primex. The oil spill will not be covered. It's not part of our insurance coverage and working with I think Chuck Mitchell and Bob Harder are getting quotes for fencing and signage. So we need the quotes or we need the estimates so that we can submit them to the insurance company to get reimbursed. Well, according to the conversation I had with Primex, I know that DES was contacted and notified that there is a spill. I don't know what DES is going to do about it, but essentially what Primex said is that find out what needs to be done. Town should clean it up and then and then submit a bill or an invoice to the person who created this bill. So. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Excuse me, Catherine said she had some questions for me under my report. You said you had you were going to wait.
That's right. You answered one.
Okay.
Which was great about Caleb Hill. Have any bids gone out for the study to repair the island hydro study?
Three, I'm supposed to get three erosion bids? No. Done. It's on the list.
I bet it's a long list.
It's at the top.
Thank you.
Keith, you are up. Talk about the muni bid.
All right. So as you all know, we have four lovely Crown Vics, three of ours, one is back to the town, but they're all down there to be auctioned off. So Jeannie had brought up something that Meredith had that uses, and it's called munisabid. So what it is, is it's a online bidding. It's kind of like eBay. So for municipal school, things like that, surplus. Pretty easy pictures. You put all your information on that. I think everybody's been on eBay. It's exactly the same. 9% is what it is. 9% buyer's fee. That has nothing to do with us. So it's totally separate. They use, you have to put your credit card information in. They get on, they check out the pictures, mileage. What we'll end up doing is picking out a time for viewing, an inspection like a day, not really inspection, but just checking out the cars inside, outside. We'll give plenty of pictures, plenty of information on that. If the board decides to go that route. Day of the week of the viewing, it will be obviously at the DPW. That's where the cars are right now. We'll go down on that day as an officer myself or the sergeant salmon. He's kind of put this together after getting the information. And then we will coordinate that way, put it on for so many days. We'll kind of figure out how long we want that. See if we want to reserve or not. If not, it just goes. And they have stipulations. Obviously, they frowned upon people that I don't know, kind of like, I wouldn't call it like fraud bidding, but kind of like tire kickers. So they'll get on, they'll bid, and then they don't even show up or they don't call. They have stipulations for that, but really what would happen, looking through some of the stuff and asking some questions is if they don't pay, and this is just kind of going off, but really that's the first thing I thought. What happens if somebody wins, they don't pay? What you do is you obviously get a hold of this company or you have an email, phone, you get a hold of the person. If they don't respond within a couple of days, then they'll go to the next highest bidder is what it would go to. Or you can put it back on, one of the two. So you have that you have that option. They'll probably go after whatever their legality blacklist them however, or whatever goes on with that. So what I'm asking from the board or the board is if this is something that we'd want, the avenue we'd want to go, if it sounds like it's something I could see when this door opens up using it in other forms, I'd have to look, but I know there's a lot of other towns that use other things. I know we have a whole slew of stuff that just kind of just sits around and we really don't do much with it. And I would say that's old stuff. We have these holsters and we have new firearm, not the firearms itself, but the holsters because of the new firearms and the radio boots. Yep, yep, bike boots. Some of the small, the radio equipment, you know, the all those control boxes and stuff that we don't use anymore. They just go, yeah, cages, things like that. They just go to scrap. Somebody's out there that wants to use that stuff. So just kind of want to see a direction of what the board wants to go with that.
How do we normally dispose of these vehicles?
Usually we use the the auction, the state auction down at, I think it's the farm, White Farm. We've done that with the white Crown Vic. We used to call the white whale. And then one or two other vehicles that were were used. It wasn't. It wasn't too bad. It wasn't big money. I mean, I thought we would get more for the white car, but we didn't. And then we were going to do the the kind of the silent or the sealed bid. And that's just a lot to get everything together. They take, this company takes care of everything. The only thing we'd have to kind of figure out is the state, it would be the same stipulations as money wise, because once they're done with it, this company, like I said, gets the 9% because they give their credit card information. They take the 9% off of that total. Okay, so that it's already factored in. So they're billed bidding at 2,000. 9% already, they get that, we get the 2,000. And they would have to come and pay and and go about the same way as you would if you were going to do that sealed bid.
They get 2,000. I mean, I'd be glad to give them 9%.
Yeah.
Crown Vic.
And really, that's that's how they make their money. So.
How does this company promote itself? I know it's on the internet, but I mean, do they? How long have they been out there and we're just hearing about them? You said, I mean, do they do they advertise their existence in municipal magazines, police magazines? How do people know they can go there and look for this stuff?
For us, it's going to be putting it out on social media. So obviously, we can use Facebook, the town website, things like that. I personally, I'm pretty, I'm a I'm a tech person. I know I I've never even heard of it. So I think it's a newer company, but it has a lot of like, it's kind of, it's kind of like someone just thought outside of the box and said, wow, we're is a good opportunity to kind of, so I don't think it's been out that long. Do you know?
I really, I really don't know much other than the fact that my finance director and Meredith, they do it and they have been reporting back to the board that they're really seeing an increase in the amount of money that they're getting from these versus the way they used to go. So and and like the chief said, it's a easier process. So but that's about all I know. And I just suggested that he might want to look into it.
Right.
It looks like it was founded in 2006, but it does take a long time for that stuff to to gain.
One of the circumstances, you know, just recently did a large auction like that online is somebody went and they bought something and they they got a really good deal, like a tractor trailer, trailer. Three footer for, I think it was like $300.
Yeah.
They paid the $300. And then they decide that they didn't want it. But it's they they paid for it, so it's theirs.
Yep.
So we've been stuck with it for two months. So it has to be if they do not pick it up within a certain period of time. And then auctions, like, well, we're done with it because somebody paid with it. Now you'd have to re-listen.
That's a good point.
We ran into that.
Yep.
And, yeah. We have a 53 foot orange trailer on the property that's owned by somebody else that we can't do anything because they won't pick up. So.
Yep.
Heck of a buy too.
Well, that's the thing.
Oh, okay.
You know, a lot of times these look great in the pictures and people might have vehicles or whatever you call it.
Yeah.
And they click 300 bucks for it or something like that. Nobody else bids, but now they own it and they paid for it.
Yep.
So that would be a question to ask them if they don't pick it up within so much time.
Yep. I think that was one of the one of the things that I had seen. Yeah.
And who gets some money for it? And you have to they get their 9%. Now you have to relist it or how that works. That's I'm sure they have dealt with that.
Yeah, I mean.
So check it to see if that's something you can deal with.
Yeah, I mean, that's what they, one of these blog, on their website, you can ask, there's a lot of Q and As and a lot of things that you can see. And they did say to make sure, there were 10, like 10 things on there to make sure when you're a buyer or even when you're a seller, but mostly when you're a buyer. These are the things. And one of them was that to make sure you put on how many days you give them to respond, how many days you give to to before they bid, obviously, to come and get the the product. Or this is what happens. So that's definitely something we can look into and I'll do some digging and look.
Got rid of some.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
A lot of stuff very easily. It was great.
Seems like a good program, so. Easy.
I say go ahead and do it and and just don't don't have to just include the vehicles if you want to try something else on there, dude.
Yeah, I'll start with the vehicles, see how that process goes and obviously, it's a little different. And obviously, it's a little different, you know, when you're. I think once we get the format of it, how it goes, then we'll kind of know, it'll be easier to.
Grow in a Canadian goose.
And enough of them over there, so. Yep, I know.
You could spare them. There's like 50 of them over there.
I know. I got calls all weeks about them.
They still out there?
Check the lawn out at my house.
They don't leave goodness behind.
No, they don't. I mean, National Night Out, there was a lot out there. There was a lot, yeah.
It'll make the lawn green though. Look how green the lawn is.
Good thing it's going to rain. Hard.
All right, okay. Yeah, we're good. You got anything else? Kath Catherine, you want to bring this up?
Oh, she didn't send that to me.
Oh.
Is that?
I forgot about that.
That the parking at?
Yep.
Yep.
Tilton House Parking Lot and it's. And you can't see it in this picture. I took this one because I like the car parked right beside the fire hydrant that says no parking.
Yeah.
And they were there, I can tell you they were there for, they were there when I got there and an hour and a half later when I left, they were still there. So I was wondering if it was an apartment dwell. But when you come in on the western side, there were cars parallel, the river. Made it really difficult with that big sewer.
It made the.
Concrete box to go around.
Yep.
And. Yeah, it was amazing, amazingly. And I parked. There were, these were all empty.
Oh.
So probably when these there, it was full, but nevertheless.
Yeah. I did pass it along to the sergeants to inform the patrol to pick that up, so.
We're paving next, right?
But, yeah.
It's getting in there and he can put the lines on there and no parking.
Well, I'm wondering if we should put no parking. Well, like it didn't work. What am I saying?
And I want to say that that hydrant there does have a sign that hangs on it that says out of use or out of commission or something like that. If I'm, I'm not 100%.
Still says.
But. But I know you're absolutely right, no. But also when that thing hangs underneath there, you know that that's like, oh, well, it's it doesn't work, so it's not going to matter. They're not going to use it. That's that's what they're.
But when we pave this.
I would definitely put something, yeah.
I have, we should, you know, put those hash marks that indicate no parking.
One person does it and then it's okay, the next person, and yeah, that's how that goes, so.
He did it.
Also on School Street this week, every single day, just above the town parking lines, there have been three vehicles and a minimum of two, but three in parked in front of next to Louise Longhouse Building, the next one. It's been sold, it used to be a bucket or. French name, I can't think of.
What is it, number three? Are you talking about right after the town?
Right after.
Yep, yep.
Looks like.
I've had conversations before.
On.
The sidewalk.
Blocking the sidewalk.
Yes.
Fredette. Fredette's building, but used to be Fredette, but it's not no longer because he passed away. But they're block literally blocking the sidewalk. So if anybody from town hall, particularly, well, it's opening now, but particularly now where they have to park up at the parking spot, they cannot walk up the sidewalk, they have to cross the street because these cars are blocking it. They have to cross the street and then walk.
Yeah, not only is it illegal because it says no parking, it's also illegal because it's on the sidewalk.
And it says no parking. This side of the street, period.
Yeah.
All right, just so you know.
Thank you.
All right.
Pass that along.
Yep, and then, okay, so we're going to go into non-public and we're gonna. You're you're coming, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you just want to hang around?
Everybody else who needs public.
Yeah, well, so he just clicked that on again so we can see. Okay. Yeah, thank you. All right, at this time, we are going to go into non-public just before we go into non-public because we still have the last few stragglers of evaluations. Do we have any from the public that needs to have any questions for the board at this time? Okay, hearing none. The time being 7:26, I make a motion to move into non-public per RSA 91A:3. Two, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected. One has a right to a public meeting and two requests that the meeting to be open in which case the request shall be granted. Second by Catherine Dawson, roll call vote.
Kessaman, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, folks. Like to make a motion to seal the minutes of the August 17th, 2023 meeting because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently. Non-public meeting, yes. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Joel, you're Mike was all.
Is there any new business to come before us?
Just this one thing.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Time being 9:53, we're adjourned. Good evening, folks.